So you Jackson was in here last week?
Mm-hmm.
But this was already all screwed before they came in. When was the school just was it? Or they were in here last week, or the week before? I think it was screwing planning present last.
What's that? That's my second one.
That's our default.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID. Enter your participant ID followed by. You are in the meeting now.
Okay, we'll bring the meeting to order in closed session. We update given on 1A. 2A confidential minutes were approved. Would you mind standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Public matters, not on the agenda, discussion items only, no action to be taken. Any person may address the Board at this time upon any subject within the jurisdiction of Amador County Board of Supervisors. However, any matter that requires action may be referred to staff and/or committee for report, recommendation for possible action, and subsequent board meetings. Board, anything?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to acknowledge the recent passing of Cat Everett on July 1st. She was Amador County's poet laureate, and there's a service for her today. Instead of a moment of silence, I'd just like to read one of her shorter poems. And that is "The Most Beauty Comes from Honey on the Waters: The Colors of Change, The Colors of the First Fadings, Dusty Greens to Gold." Cat Everett.
Thank you.
Oops, hold on, Bill. Okay.
Okay, I'm going to pass out a copy of an item I want to talk briefly about. Okay, it's about the dark sky ordinance. I passed out to you my proposed letter to the editor relative to asking the Board to again look at and adopt dark sky ordinance. That letter did appear in the ledger dispatch of July 7th. I don't want to tell you a quick story about why I think it's important. When we first moved to Jackson Valley, I had, and I still have, a big tall light pole with a light on top. And every night, I'd turn it on. And you should have heard the other residents in Jackson Valley blasphemy for how dare us violate the dark sky. They came to Jackson Valley to live, peace and quiet rural area. They didn't like lights running off, going on all over the place. And I think that is probably the opinion of virtually most of the residents in Amador County. We are a rural county. We have no need for the bright lights of the cities. And I request that the Board again look at that and go back and adopt a dark sky ordinance. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You know, one thing I'd like to say in response to what Bill said, I'm with you in a lot of ways, Bill. One of my pet peeves is people, businesses leave all their lights on at night to protect their business. And I always said you'd be better off if you turned them off, because thieves can't see what they're stealing. Along that line, when people go to bed, hey, turn your lights off. But I also understand a lot of times, as a rural area, you don't, you're not always building everything brand new. And a lot of these people have life, and they may be working in a barnyard, they may be working in a business, and they want to put some light out in the area. And the dark, the way their dark skies ordinance was written, it had a lot of problems. Bill, it was an overreach.
Okay. Glad to see.
So perhaps a shortened version of dark skies, or reduced, is more amenable to you, Supervisor?
Possibly, yeah. We could consider that. I would.
Wasn't the El Dorado County's two or three pages, and Amador's proposed was 19?
Hmm.
And then those numbers are a guess, but I don't think they're very far off.
Anybody else on public matters?
Jim Rooney, Amador County Assessor, with Jeff Hemmerman, the Assistant Assessor. We just wanted to let you know we finished turning over the assessment roll a little less than two weeks ago. And we just wanted to let you know what the new assessments are in relation to last year. And the assessments in the past year have gone up, they went up just under 7%. We have 6.76%. And we have it segregated by, you know, each city, as well as unincorporated area and the county as a whole. And wanted to let you know that since 2008, 2008 was kind of the low point in assessments in the county, or when things started to go down. And it was, since 2008, assessments in the county have gone up just about 40% since 2008. That's 15 years. And since 2007, or actually, no, from 2008, they've gone up just about 40%. From the low point, when, I'm sorry, from the low point, which was right around 2011, that was when things really got down low. Things have gone up 57.79% since that time. So we're up substantially from those down years. In the county, I did want to let you know that we have calculated that in the county there are approximately 15,400 residential properties, improved residential properties, essentially houses in the county. Of those 15,000, 8,445 are considered primary residences. That means people, they, they're not renting it out. It's not their second home, it's their primary residence. Also, in the county, of all the cities in the county, the county that, or the city that had the greatest increase, by the way, Jeff, if I have this wrong, let me know, we're showing, the reason I ask Jeff is because Jeff is the one who did all the final numbers and calculations. And we showed Plymouth to be 16.25% increase over last year. Plymouth was the largest increase in the county. And its total assessed value is about $179 million. The next biggest increase in the county was Ione. Ione went up 12.82%, substantial. And Cedar Creek went up about 5.56%. Jackson only went up 3.84%. And we're pretty sure the reason Plymouth and Ione have increased as much as they have is they have a lot of building going on, which is new value on the roll.
What's Up Country do?
What's that?
Do you have any numbers for Up Country?
I don't particularly have Up Country, but I have the unincorporated areas of the county. The unincorporated areas went up just about 6%. So the unincorporated areas generally went up a little bit less than the cities did. So anyway, that has been, let me think, that has been, one, two, three, four, about seven years of increase of assessed value. Back in, actually, let me make sure I got this right. But gosh, maybe it was more than that. I got this on two different pages. But anyway, we've had a number of years of increases, and you, most of us all remember 2007, '08, '09, '10, '11, property values were terrible. Well, things have been pretty healthy the past few years. And one thing that I am kind of pleased in is when, we remember in 2008, '09, when real estate values were going down, they went down hard. They went down big. It seems to me that property values have kind of leveled off, maybe decreased a little bit, but we're not seeing that huge correction of 30 or 40% that we saw back in 2008, '09, and '10. So anyway, that's what's going on with assessed values, which directly affect, you know, our budget.
You still see, in Ione, every house that comes on the market sells very quickly. So I don't know how much they're negotiating in there, it doesn't seem like a whole lot, because it appears to be competitive for the market out there.
Yeah, it does. And it also looks like it's a very limited market. It looks like Castle Oaks is just about all built out. What's, Wildflower?
Wildflower's got another phase.
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Go ahead.
Yeah, but there's a new phase, you know, right, you know, on the left side as you enter Castle Oaks, it's going to be built, Aldi, and then that Avalon Drive. There's some construction there. Wildflower's got one more phase.
How does the, it seems like a lot of those, the people moving in are from the Bay Area or other areas where their homes were of a lot more value than what they're purchasing. How does that affect the assessments, assessed valuation?
You know, Jeff and I, we're dealing right now with a proposition called Proposition 19. And I've given you that example before, where somebody sells a home in the Bay Area for a million two. They get to bring their assessed value of $100,000 to Amador County, where they buy that $500,000 home, and it gets assessed at $100,000. And we're dealing with that, which means somewhat of a reduction, a potential reduction in assessed value to the county. But we're working with the state, and Amador County is kind of in the lead in working with the state, because the Prop 19 also said that counties that show a reduction due to this Prop 19 should get reimbursed. And we're holding their feet to the fire. We're saying, this is what it says, and here's the data that shows, and we're being very And we're being very precise in showing what has been foregone by Amador County. And we, the problem is they're going to say our first reporting periods in about two or three, two or three years. But we're keeping very good data and we are going to tell them, show them the loss of assessed value in the county. And we're expecting them to make good on what that proposition said.
How did Prop Nineteen read? Should be reimbursed or shall be reimbursed?
Will be.
Will be.
It will be reimbursed, but it just doesn't say when.
I know.
That's.
Yeah.
So Jim, question. So if you're, in your example, if they sell a house for a million dollars, let's say, and they buy a five hundred thousand dollar house here, that leaves five hundred thousand dollars that, in principle, that they haven't reinvested into the real estate. So will they then pay a capital gains on that that's left over or?
They get a one-time exemption, don't they?
Well, no, that, this is more of a state and federal tax issue. But yeah, that's, my understanding, that they probably do. But again, we're dealing just in the property tax portion of it.
Right, no, I understand. I just, usually people, when they sell their, their expensive house, they try to put it all into something else and that drives prices up even further. That way they shelter, you know, the, the tax liability or.
So, yeah.
Okay.
But anyway.
I thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Appreciate the update.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else from the public?
Michelle Geller, Code Enforcement. Good morning, Board. I'm just updating you on the last two community cleanups that we have, as well as inform you of the last two that are left. So the Pine Grove Pioneer Cleanup that was held on April 29th. We had twenty-five boxes hauled out by ACES. Total trash tonnage disposed was thirty-seven point seven nine tons. Green waste tonnage recycled was twenty-three point zero seven. Entire tonnage recycle was two point nine four tons. Number of appliances and refrigerators recycled was ninety-six. As far as the transfer station voucher totals, which were from the Tuesday through the Tuesday of May 7, including the day of the cleanup, we did an estimated voucher tonnage of seventy-four point fifty-eight with a total event tonnage of one hundred and thirty-five point forty-four tons. As far as metal recycling goes, we did a total weight of scrap metal at thirty-three point eight tons. Our e-waste stats were nine hundred and twenty pounds of CRT, one thousand five hundred and fifty-one pounds of flat panels. And U-Wed e-waste was one thousand nine hundred and eighteen pounds. And laptops were one hundred and sixty pounds. And then we also recycled ten CF containers, which was a total quantity of ten thousand of paint. Any questions on that cleanup?
Sounds like it was a popular event.
Oh, yeah, we got over three hundred and sixty cars on that.
On a baseball field.
Is that just the Pine Grove Pioneer?
Yeah.
Okay, do you have the stats for the Sutter Creek one?
Yeah, I'm doing that one right next.
Oh, okay.
I'm just asking if you had any questions on that one. Okay. So the Sutter Creek Jackson one was, number of boxes that were hauled were twenty-one. Trash tonnage disposed was thirty-five point five. Green waste tonnage recycle was three point eight seven. Tire tonnage recycle was point eight six. Number of appliances recycled was ninety-three. Transfer station vouchers, which seventy were issued, they noted here, we had an estimated tonnage of thirty point fifty-two, which the total event tonnage was seventy point seventy-five. We did end up doing for scrap metal thirty-eight thousand three hundred and seventy pounds. For paint care, we did eight boxes at sixty-four hundred pounds of paint. And then for e-waste, we had flat panels at one thousand seven hundred and seventeen pounds, CRTs at one thousand two hundred and ninety-four pounds, and e-waste U-Wed at two thousand one hundred and sixty pounds. Any questions about that one?
No, but would you mind sending all those stats to the, the board?
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
How does the Pine Grove Pioneer compare to years past? Is it, is it going up?
Well, this year we actually did two districts than we normally do the one. So I would say that was our most popular one, obviously adding the second district into it.
So that was the biggest so far?
That's been the biggest one.
Your time record?
Yeah.
Okay.
So honestly, I want to thank the sponsors that were involved in both of the cleanups. So that was ACES County Supervisors, Sierra Yard and Supply, Lowe's Greater Valley Conservative Group, Wilkinson's Portable Toilet, Cities of Jackson, and Sutter Creek. Henderson's Development, which is the one that let us use the Kmart parking lot. Got Metal, Big Owls, and of course Caltrans. So we have two other recycle events that are left. The next one is going to be a greens cleanup that is going to be sponsored by Caltrans. That's going to be August 4th through 11th. We're going to be doing it from nine to two at Pioneer's lower softball field, just like last year. It will be open to all Amador County residents. We will be accepting greens material only at that event. So shrubs, leaves, pine needles, manzanita, branches, and stumps that are no bigger than twenty-four inches by twenty-four inches, two feet by two feet in diameter. ACES will be providing our cleanup services, the bins disposal and transfer. Sierra Yard Waste will be allowing us for equipment to load the dumpsters. This event will be a first come, first served and no businesses will be allowed. I will have a daily intercater out on the fence to be able to allow the residents to see what the capacity is. So again, if we reach capacity, it may, the dates may cut shorter. I want to make sure this isn't a free-for-all until the 11th. It is when we reach capacity with the, the grand amount that we have.
You'll be accepting logs too?
Yes, so anything, the diameter has to be twenty-four, no larger than twenty-four inches by twenty-four inches length and width.
Oh, length too?
Yeah, length and width, yeah.
Why is that?
It, just for, I guess it's going to Fasini's, so it needs to be able to go through their shredder.
Okay.
And then our last recycle event will be January 20th, 2024, which will be our shredded event. That will be held at Airport Road, that one. And that one will be open to all Amador County residents.
Thank you very much.
You know, one thing, I mean, I could, I may be, be nice if you do want to run the Plymouth areas at some point. Maybe I'll talk to the City of Plymouth and see if we work on something on that, maybe next year or something. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public? You want to speak, Lisa? Okay, come on down. Good morning.
So I'm Lisa Klosowski, I'm resident of Sutter Creek and have owned a business on Main Street for twenty-four years now. I was also the director for the Sutter Creek Visitor Center for a little over ten years until the COVID shutdown. And at that point, the volunteers and everyone was dismissed. And then when the visitor center opened up again, it had a different direction and it was staffed by city employees. And, and that hasn't worked, so it's closing at the end of the month. And that's why I'm here. So, excuse me for, Pat Crosby worked really hard to get us this visitor center. I can get a grip on myself here. And I think he would be very brokenhearted if we didn't try to keep it. So that's what I'm doing. I'm exhausting all avenues to try to save the visitor center. And I have contacted the landlord, which I have a good rapport with. I worked with him for many years. And he doesn't want to see it go either. So he has given me two weeks to come up with a plan for how to keep it. And he's a big supporter of it and wants, doesn't want to see it go away. Our visitor center was staffed by all volunteers who love the area and are very knowledgeable in the area. We did regular field trips to different locations so they could speak intelligently on, on things. Not just tourist attractions, but we, we toured lodging, we toured businesses. We did all kinds of things so they would be able to speak to people on all different levels. And we serviced over eight thousand people a year. We kept a written record for how many people came through the visitor's center. And so I have, like I said, I'm exhausting all, all avenues. Try to see if we can get one year to get on our feet. And I need the support of the community and the county. Our volunteers direct people all over the county for all different things. And anyway, that's why I'm here. I'm sure I'm forgetting a million things, but I wrote up a nice thing for y'all. Pardon me, I'm so sorry.
Not a problem. I saw your email. I have a couple of questions. How were you, how was the visitor center funded in the past? Was that through the City of Sutter Creek?
Yes.
Okay, have you approached them and asked?
Is it, right now it's, there was nothing in the budget. The budget passed and the visitor's center was taken out.
Okay.
So on the seventeenth, I'll be going to city council. And I hope I have a good proposal at that time. What I'm doing is I'm, I'm contacting all kinds of organizations, businesses, private citizens, to get pledges. I'm not asking for any money right now. I'm just getting pledges so that I can go to the city council and say, this is what I have. Can you match this? And I've also started the paperwork to make it, if, if necessary, a nonprofit through the Amador Community Foundation under their umbrella. And, you know, that if we need to go that route, that I'm doing that as well. I'm doing anything I can think of to try to accomplish this.
Well, I, I'll contact you after this meeting about the pledge part, okay?
Thank you. That's all I can ask and.
Have you, have you possibly reached out to ACT, Amador Council of Tourism? I know that they've had centers in various places. Would they?
No, I have not. I, I mentioned it to someone else I'm working with on this and, and she said, maybe, maybe not because they are also funded by, you know, they have, I, I will look into that.
Okay, also, you in the chamber?
Chamber, I did send, I sent an email to with a pledge.
Okay.
From the chamber and Native Sons. I mean, my list is very long for the organization, Native Daughters, Rotary, Lions Club, and then the Rancheria, of course, and anybody else I can think of to send, just to get a pledge. You know, smaller clubs, maybe five hundred dollars. Bigger ones, a thousand or fifteen hundred. And like I said, they're, they're pledges and if they come back with, well, we can do two hundred. You know, I'm of course going to be very appreciative of whatever we can pull together to do this.
All right, well, I'll be in touch.
Okay, thank you. And I have, would you like me to distribute the proposal to the others?
Just go ahead and give it to Heather.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Lisa, do you, how much money are you trying to raise? Do you have a dollar figure?
I do. And in the packet here, I have the proposed budget.
Okay.
It's not much because it's volunteer run, there's no paid staff. Also, I, I sent out an email to all the alumni volunteers and within twenty-four hours, I got twelve back. So, and I just started this two days ago. So that was when I found out that, you know. And also, just to let you know, the landlord called me at home when they gave notice on the property. And he called me up and he said, Lisa, what's going on? And anyway, that's why I say he gave, gave me personal time to try to figure this out and make it work.
So you, I glanced at the proposal, the biggest expense seems to be the rent, right?
Yes, and the rent did, did increase. It went up from five hundred to eight fifty. He hadn't raised the rent in fifteen years. And then when they gave notice, and he knows he can get a lot more than that for it. It is a perfect location. It's a small, it's a small building, it's the perfect size. It's right on Main Street, right next to where Fine Eye Gallery was. And perfect location and, and people came in to look at the history. We had lots of history in there before. I have contacted the Sutter Creek Community Benefit Foundation, which is where most of the artifacts that were in there before were donated to them for their museums. So, and I had talked to Rick Chantlin about doing rotating displays, historic displays. And people love to come in and, and see the history and learn about the area. And we have information on everything. And we were a great location for people to put information on their organizations, their events. And we welcomed all information. It wasn't just Sutter Creek, it was countywide. And we sent people countywide.
Thank you, Lisa, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, I appreciate your time.
Okay. Anybody else from the public? How about Zoom?
Just a, a quick comment. If you're watching on Zoom, you notice we have a different camera angle today, which is unfortunate. Our regular camera is on the, is having a technical issue. So we will get that fixed and be back to normal next time, but.
Yeah, it looks like we're in the villains layer on the old Batman series.
We're also tilted, but other than that.
Well, it was always tilted in this series.
So that's what's going on today.
Okay. Nobody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Onto approval agenda.
Who to approve?
Second. Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Move to approve consent agenda?
Well, hold on just for a second. Do we have any public comment on the consent?
Not at this time.
Okay, now I'll take your motion.
Who to approve consent agenda?
Okay, call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, on to regular agenda. University of California 4H Youth Development Program, presentation of recent 4H experiences. Morning.
Good morning. I am Dr. Kelsey Williams, right now representing the University of California Cooperative Extension 4H Program. And I'm just going to do some fun facts and introduce the group that we have here with us today. So I just wanted to let all of you know that Amador County has three percent of eligible youth enrolled compared to a statewide average of less than one percent. And this program year that just actually ended, so the 2022, 2023 year, we are at near-record enrollment levels for our 4H program. So we're doing pretty well. As we speak, we have seven of our intermediate and senior youth at the 4H camp in South Lake Tahoe. So we're missing a few of our kids here today. And I wanted to formally invite you all to our Amador County Farm Day, which is going to be held on Tuesday, September 26th this year at the Amador County Fairgrounds. Okay, and then also, don't forget, we have our Amador County Fair coming up. And you'll see these familiar faces along with many other 4Hers in club t-shirts or their uniforms, spending time in both the Fern Feathers buildings and the livestock barns, doing what we call barn duty. So they are there to talk to the public and to advocate for all the agriculture that they're involved in. So if you see these kids, please ask. So if you see these kids, please ask them questions about their project animals, that's what they're there for. So, uh, we have some of our poultry members. And this is our club leader for ION, Ms. Alyssa Hardy, and I'm gonna let her introduce her group. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Uh, my name's Alyssa Hardy, I am one of our project leaders at the ION Community 4H. I run our poultry, our goats, arts and crafts, help out with a bunch of other groups, kinda fill in wherever's needed. Uh, these are a few of my members, come on up, guys. These are a few of our poultry members, this is ION's first year bringing poultry back. So, Annabelle, my youngest is over here, she really wanted to do poultry and since I did it for her sister, I said, okay, fine, I guess I'm gonna lead it. So, I'm learning along the way with them. Um, this is Emma, she's gonna kinda take over from here, she's one of our junior leaders for ION Community 4H.
Go ahead and pull the mic down to you.
My name's Emma Bissack, and as she said, I'm the junior leader for ION Community 4H Poultry. And I've been in 4H for two years. I participate in sewing, arts and crafts, floral cavies, and goats. And I'm currently junior leader for goats too. And I'll be talking about bumblefoot and chickens. And bumblefoot is a staph infection in the foot, and one way that you can identify it is when the toes start curling in. And, yeah, that's it.
How do you treat the-
It's not very treatable, but if you catch it in time, you can start clipping their little uh, toenails.
I see.
Any more questions?
I had a pet, pet chicken that's about your age. He was an, I think an arachnida, actually.
Any other questions?
I'll just comment, I have about, uh, I got five new chickens and uh, I just released them with the general population, so uh, so I'm, I'm always interested in chickens.
You got some, it looks like you got some ducks there.
Yeah.
So, these are called ducks, they're like ducks, but they're smaller. And originally, they were used for hunters, so the hunters would put them in cages. And as you can tell, they are very loud and they're only-
Actually, they're very soft right now, that's, I got a surprise. Don't worry about them quacking right now.
They're only three months old, so once they get older, they're gonna get a lot louder. And this is about how big they're gonna get.
Now, people have told me that, I guess, duck eggs are actually better than chicken eggs?
They're bigger and they have more calcium in them, so they're healthier too.
There you go.
Do, do ducks get along with chickens?
Hmm, depending on the duck, like-
Depending on the chicken.
This is Annabelle Hardy. Annabelle is, this is her first year in 4H. She participates in goats, arts and crafts, floral design, sewing, cake decorating, poultry, rabbits and cavies. Annabelle's gonna tell you about her favorite chicken, Bianca.
My chicken, um, Bianca, she, sometimes she likes just pecks. And she likes pecks my hand.
Yep.
And then, um, she- She also, um, she also likes bugs. Cause we like lift her food thing up and then there's a lot of bugs under it and then they all start trying to eat them.
Yep, chickens and ducks sure like bugs. Good job.
Yes.
This is Madeline Hardy. Madeline has been in 4H for two years. She participates in cake decorating, arts and crafts, poultry, goats, sewing, floral, rabbits and cavies. She also is the current sergeant in arms for her club. Madeline is gonna talk to you about getting your chickens ready to show.
You have to wash your chickens before show so they, um, they don't get dirty and-
How fun is it to wash your chickens?
It's fun.
Is it?
Yeah.
Do you use, do you use um, hairdryer on them?
We haven't tried that yet, but they like, love it.
Well, my, my chickens every day, they take like dirt baths. They, they have these little tits that they've, and they lay in the dirt and flip, flip it up on their feathers. Are you familiar with that?
Go ahead, come forward and speak into the mic.
They do that in summer to stay cool because when they like go lower down into the dust, it's cooler for them down there.
Yeah. I've also heard that's a way that they get rid of the mites, you know, that's, I, I had a mite problem, but I, I got this good stuff at the feed barn, so I took care of that.
You know what else, what else is kinda fun? I kinda stopped doing it because you want your turn and stuff over for like rocks and boards, chickens get the bugs. After a while, you'll, you'll walk out of your house and the chickens are free ranging. They meet you and they're, and they're like, and they're- They want you to go look for bugs for them. And what's interesting, you do that for a few months and after a while, you flip stuff over and there's no bugs, they got them all. They're pretty good at getting rid of bugs. There you go.
All right, well, I thank you for being here. Any questions from the board? Oh, I'm sorry.
They're still going.
They're still going.
So, this year, our, this year, we had two teams um, from Amador County participate in Avian Bowl. Lexi and Lily Hemel, Emma and Madeline were part of those teams and we're gonna tell you about competing. So, last year, we had a junior team and we won, they won state. Last year, they won state for the junior team. This year, we had a junior and a senior team and our junior team was me, Madeline and Lily, or me, Madeline and Lexi. And then our senior team was Anna, Lily and Cecilia.
And for the Avian Bowl, we practiced and practiced and practiced. And I think that we got a lot farther in it and we did really good.
Yeah, we practiced for two months, just studying about different avian things like eggs and chickens, different ducks, then we went down to Fresno and competed, turkey, yeah.
So, so one of the things that we're able to do within our 4H program is to offer uh, events like this. So this was an offshoot of poultry and it's pretty intense studying. The kids have to learn about food poisoners, biosecurity methods, um, egg economics, uh, breeds of chickens, anything that you can think of. And this is the state qualifier, so the senior team that wins the state competition goes and competes nationally in Kentucky in the fall. So we did not win this year, but our teams are already talking about um, getting to Kentucky this next year. So, be on the lookout for these kids here.
Sounds good, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I have a question for you on the, you said Amador County has three percent of eligible youth enrolled. Does that take into account, is that excluding the number that go to independent or grange?
Oh, yeah, so it does not exclude those numbers. Eligible just means by their age, so our five-year-olds to our nineteen-year-olds. So they're just looking statistically at how many youth in that age group are in the county. And we have three percent enrolled in the 4H program.
It'd be nice to pull those numbers out and know how many are left. So of that, uh, how many kids, if, maybe it goes from fifteen hundred to a thousand, then I'm just throwing numbers out. But it'd be nice to see that figure.
Yeah, I'm just really proud of our program for having such a high percentage compared to the state too. So we have ex, uh, it's all volunteer run, so we couldn't do it without people like Alyssa running our program, so. Okay, thank you.
Any questions from Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Thanks girls.
Thank you all.
Thank you ladies, I truly appreciate it.
Good way to start off a meeting.
That's it. Who doesn't love hearing a duck once in a while? Okay, we're on to 3B, Amador Resource Conservation District. Update by re- representatives of the subject entity regarding recent planned activities which serve to reduce the risk of catast- catastrophic wildfire. You just can't leave, can you?
I, I, I figure if I was here for one, I might as well do them both, so. Okay, again, Dr. Kelsey Williams, I'm also a board of director for the Amador Resource Conservation District. So I came uh, probably about six months ago and updated you all on some of the projects that we're working on and we thought it was time to do a little update again. Okay, so uh, RCD, these are three of the areas that we focus on. Soil health, forest health and uh, SAQWA, which uh, the soil health, some of the, the programs that we help with right now or have funding for or seeking funding would be healthy soils, uh, application and assistance, carbon farm planning, pollinator habitat installation, which is a newer one for us, compost trial research. And uh, several of these, I know that um, I've mentioned before or maybe you are, uh, have been to some of our workshops or check our website out, so they'll look familiar. Jackson Creek Forest Health, which just got up and off the ground the last couple of months. Mitchell Mine Fuel Break. We also have a lot of technical and funding assistance available for residents of Amador County. So we work with NRCS, uh, Amador Fire Safe Council. We have been doing the roadside and community chipping program for a couple of years now. SAQWA, it, um, we assist members, and this is a water quality uh, uh, adherent, so it's a cooperative uh, portion for anybody that does irrigation. So members of Amador County would be typically in the southern part of the county and then into the Sacramento Valley. So we administer all of uh, that program. Okay, so it's a, it, it gets quite confusing because there's so many different coordinations with people and other organizations in the county. So RCD is working uh, very closely with NRCS, UCC-E and Amador Fire Safe Council. So we have uh, quite a few programs under hu- soil health. And this last year, there were fourteen awards uh, for, under the Cal, uh, CDFA Healthy Soil Program. And we awarded over, or, or we didn't award, but worked with residents those fourteen awards on over six hundred thousand dollars treating almost seven thousand acres. Over the last five years, NRCS has obligated over one and a half million dollars in funding to assist private landowners and implementation of different natural resource practices on over fifteen thousand acres. And then um, to date, uh, they are working with uh, several equip uh, grants and CSPs on almost a thousand acres. And that little tiny pie chart, it's super small if you're looking on your laptop, just goes over some of the different uh, prescriptions under these programs. So residents, you could see a big chunk is composting, so spreading compost to improve soil health. Hedge rows have been put in, range seeding, silver pasture, reduced tillage, cover crop, mulching, riparian forest, and some prescribed grazing practices. So technical assistance really means helping these residents that are, uh, go through the application process to receive the grant money. And then all along the way, where do I get compost? How do I get it delivered to my house? What's the proper seed to put on my pasture? So that's the technical assistance that we're talking about.
So the, are people using hedge rows to uh, to fence in livestock and things like that, or?
N- not fence in livestock that I know of, but hedgerow-ing, uh, the, the ones that I'm familiar with are often uh, to reduce uh, wind and then also to increase and improve habitat for wildlife and pollinators.
Yeah, cause all around the, the UK, I mean, you drive down the roads, you, that's kinda like their fence.
Yeah, yeah, it's pretty, there's a lot, there's some cool stuff out there too. Okay, so this is one of our largest programs right now, and this is the Jackson Creek Watershed Forest Health Project. So I have a little update. The whole project is, we're hoping to treat approximately a thousand acres. Uh, currently, and I believe it just, just got finished up. We just treated about two, about four, four hundred acres through mastication. And then it will be followed up with uh, prescribed grazing practices by goats and or sheep, depending on the land. And no prescribed burns have been completed at this point, but it is part of uh, the process over the years. So this, uh, the project timeline will run through March of twenty twenty-five. And I know uh, uh, we did do a presentation, we've done several community presentations, but this is, will create kind of a C shape. And this is really starting like about this area, just up the highway, and it connects to what the Jackson Rancheria has already treated. So it should be this big swath of reduced fuel load for the Jackson Creek Watershed area. And it is also promoting forest and watershed health along the way. So we're, we are coordinating all the contract services with the private landowners on this project. Okay, the chipping program, uh, uh, the first year was a, was a pilot project and then we've got subsequent years of funding. So a lot of them are community chipping at stationary locations. For example, Lockwood Fire would be a stationary location where residents would bring their materials to have it shipped. Or um, uh, like in my neighborhood, I signed my whole neighborhood up and everybody was able to put their piles out and the contractor came through and shipped for our whole neighborhood on a couple of days. Uh, the plan is to move up country to Kirkwood and Silver Lakes as well, Silver Lake as well.
I know Kirkwood is, is very thankful for that program right now. They were just advertising on their July fourth.
Very good, awesome, that's good to hear. So, so uh, uh, in concentrated areas, but we're not forgetting about the higher country also. Mitchell Mine Fuel Break, this was originally a program with uh, Amador Fire Safe Council to do the fuel break. But then RCD is picking up, along with the University of California Cooperative Extension, to actually do research out there on different herbicide treatments, grazing treatments, and keep track of what is keeping this area free of vegetation the best. So it, they've got this all mapped out, Scott Onetto and Brian Allen, they're doing great research up there. They've had several community education events and they'll continue to do that as we move through the program. Okay, so I always like fun facts, that's what I like to do for um, all the organizations I'm in. So this year alone, uh, RCD in Amador County has contracted over one point two million dollars locally for just Jackson Creek and chipping programs. And then other programs are just under three hundred thousand, and that's local money. So we're, we're seeking out these grants, specifically Amanda Watson is, and implementing them, and a lot of the money is staying locally, so I, I like to hear that. Our programs are increasing. If you've been following RCD for several years, I mean, it's really ballooning, which it also increases our need to have employees. So we really only had one part-time employee when I first came on the board a few years ago. We currently have three part-time and three full-time. And we're seeking to hire another one, so, uh, also becoming a bigger employer along the way too. Does anybody have any questions for me? That I'll try to answer.
For me is that um, the chipping program, so are we expecting that just to continue year-round? Or is this, you know, what's your, what's your thoughts on the chipping program?
I think, so uh, it, I think the chipping program runs year-round and it's completely based on when we run out of funds.
Right.
So we have a pot of money uh, that we've got and we'll just keep going with our uh, chipping contractor until we run out of money. So I think the best thing to do is to get the application filled out and for, if it- for, if it's your community or you want it in your town, and have us, have them come out and take care of things. And I think it's, it's been really successful. So I think we want to keep trying to apply for the money as long as it's available.
I saw something you had on there by 2025. Was that funded through or?
Correct. Yeah, so that's how the grant is written. So that's, that's our timeline.
The money makes it that far.
Yeah, oh, so for, that's for the Jackson Creek Watershed Program, the 2025? Yeah, so we're trying to treat that 1,000 acres by that timeline. Yeah, and, and with most property, or I can't say most, but some properties, once mastication is done, like this year, then it will be followed up with prescribed grazing or prescribed burn to keep that, all the underbrush down. So year two and year three would be grazing or other treatments.
You can put a lot of goats on it. They'll, over time, they'll take the brush out.
Yes.
But it takes quite a few goats. It takes a number of years.
Yes, we, we, we're all, we're all dialed in. We've got contracted services all, all set already.
It was kind of interesting, talking to a forester at Stuveneg a while back. And he's shown Brian, he's lived at a house for a while. And he said, it used to be open, there's like open areas. He says, they're kind of all gone. They're just, you know, trees and the brush have filled them all in. It's, it's a big problem in our county because I used to do a lot of salvage logging. So I'd take off, top some hill somewhere and bomb off down some canyon. And you'd always find old abandoned fences everywhere. I thought, well, it used to be, you know, cows, horses, probably a lot of goats on, on that property. And they ate vegetation and kept vegetation down. Now the fences are abandoned. And some places are subdivisioned, or some places are, just people's lifestyles changed. Then you have the bear and lion things running. That doesn't help much. They like, because they like eating goats.
Anything else from the board?
Nope. Just appreciate your effort.
So the roadside chipping, is that different or the same as what Amador Fire Safe Council does? Or is what you're doing what the only chipping program?
Yeah, RCD administers it. And that's where, so Amanda Watson is also the Executive Director of Amador Fire Safe Council. And then Megan Watts, who is the contact for the chipping program, also does work for Amador Fire Safe Council. So it does get like, there's a lot of overlap.
It's RCD's program that, that Fire Safe Council uses.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, I was just trying to, yeah, that's, that was what I was trying to get at.
But if you, if you ever have a question, you just call somebody and we'll get you to the right, the right person in charge. Yeah.
Okay, anybody from the public? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Doctor. We're on to three C, discussion of possible action relative to presentation of Mitch Barker, Public Agency Retirement Services, related to the county OPEB Other Post-Employment Benefits Fund, which is partially unfunded liability for benefits that are offered to employees after they retire from the county.
Not for you, with you. Okay, that was easy. Chairman Brown.
Sir.
Members. Great to be here. Brian.
Go ahead and say your name, please.
Mitch Barker, Senior Consultant with PARZ. Also resident of Amador County, Fiddletown, to be exact. Joining me today, Andrew Brown. He's a Senior Portfolio Manager at Highmark Capital. Thank you for driving up from the Bay Area. No, you had an early start. Purpose of the meeting and presentation today is to do a quick review of your OPEB trust account. OPEB is retiree medical. And you've had some assets in our trust for some time. It's always important to review how those assets are doing in the investment world. So Andrew will be here to do that. The second reason to address you today is you adopted our trust to potentially pre-fund pension in the future. And it's important to close the loop on the paperwork. And that's to choose an investment strategy, like you did 13 years ago for OPEB. So Andrew's going to present the choices and make a recommendation. And ultimately, the board will hopefully agree or change the recommendation. It's been a while since we've been here. So I don't presume to know that you can remember everything. So just quickly, again, PARZ is the Trust Administrators. So we oversee the record-keeping and the accounting for the 115 trust that you're in right now. We're also the quarterback of the team of this group. The trustee is US Bank. They are the custodian of the assets and they hold the money. Highmark Capital, represented by Andrew Brown, is our investment management partner. I've been working with PARZ for 20 years, and I met Andrew on day one. So we've both been around a long time together. So the trust on the left is the OPEB-only trust. That's what you adopted back in the day, 2010. And November 22nd last year, you adopted the combination trust, which is on the right. Combination, meaning it has two accounting buckets, one for OPEB, one for pension. So once we get the paperwork complete, we're going to transfer your approximately 700,000 in assets from the OPEB-only trust over to the OPEB account within the combination trust. You then will get a pension account to potentially set money aside in. And I'll go over again why this makes some sense.
That's the, the pension account is what we set up last year or?
You adopted the trust.
Right.
We haven't set up the account yet.
Oh, okay.
We need this last component, which is what's the investment strategy?
Understand.
Okay.
Great.
So let's first do the quick OPEB review. Again, this began back in June 2010. The plan administrator is the County Administrative Officer. The investment strategy is the moderately conservative index strategy. Moderately conservative is the second of our five-tiered investment options. It is in a pooled account. You contributed 245,000 back in July of 2010. You contributed another 300,000. So your total contributions to date, 545,000. Andrew and his team have earned 219,000 to date. So the account balance as of May 31st, 695,000. This next slide gives you a graphical representation over time of your contributions. So you made an initial contribution way back in the day. You made another one in 2016. And those are the only two contributions to date for OPEB. And this is retiree medical benefits. GASB requires that you put in, sorry, that you get an actuary evaluation done every two years. This is the latest study. On the right-hand side, you have 349 actives. You have 39 retirees that are receiving the OPEB benefit, retiree medical. So total plan members, 388, shown by the actuary. All right, the latest numbers as of June 30, 2021 shows a total liability of 6.2 million. Think of that number as the amount of benefits promised. How much money have you set aside to pay for those benefits? 770,000. So the amount owed on that promise is 5.4 million. So you're about 12% funded. So that's a good start. We just would love to see you take the next step and start contributing more. The actuary will credit you with a higher discount rate once you do that, which will lower the liabilities dramatically. Even a contribution of 100,000 will start to send them a message that you're getting serious again. By the way, GFOA considers pre-funding OPEB best practice. And pretty much all agencies want to be doing things considered best practice. Your expenses at the bottom there for the OPEB benefit are about 200,000 per year. I'm about to turn it over to Andrew to go into the investments for your OPEB account. Any questions so far?
So the, you said the expense was about 200,000?
Yes, sir. That's that pay-go number at the bottom right.
So that's for managing the account and everything?
No, that's your actual expense for retiree.
Oh, right, right, right. Okay, good.
For your 39 retirees.
Okay, good.
Yes, sir.
You have any concern there?
Me too. All right, I'll turn it over to Andrew to get into the investments. And then I'll circle back in a sec. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Andrew Brown, Director of Investments with Highmark Capital Management. Highmark is a subsidiary of US Bank. And I'm here today to give you a very quick overview on the OPEB plan, of which at the end of this month, we will have marked and celebrated our 13th year working together. I'm going to give you, well, as Mitch said, I came up from the Bay Area. But Mitch said, if I take longer than 45 seconds on the economic overview, I'll be walking home to the Bay Area. So a quick overview on the economy. And then I'll share with you a little bit about the investment performance for the plan and part and parcel of that, a little bit on the positioning for the plan. And then I'll hand it back to Mitch to us at the table for the investment discussion on the 115. So with respect to the economic forecast for 2023 recession, small recession or maybe recession with a small r, not a capital R. We see the economic growth for GDP anywhere from a minus 0.4% to a plus 0.4% forecast rate. S and P 500 earnings probably down 8% to 10% over this period of time. Unemployment, we see it taken out from a current level of 3.7% to a four and a half to maybe 5.2% level at the end of the year. We do see inflation coming down finally after the last two, three, four years, 3.3% to 3.8% on core PCE by the end of the year on inflation. And then finally, with respect to what the Fed may do from, you know, for the next six months or so, we see one more hike. That hike is likely coming this month. And then we think that they're done with their hiking campaign. They're going to sit back and.
It's going to be a quarter percent or a half?
25 basis points. Yes, sir. All right. With respect to the OPEB plan, as I said, this is, this is the moderately conservative pool that you're invested in. The name moderately conservative relates to an asset allocation policy that we'll look at in a second. As half of the name indicates, it's designed to be conservative and not take too much risk, even though we do have a long-term time horizon. We're looking at almost, as I said, a 13-year period of time. If we were looking at a calendar year snapshot, not a fiscal year, but a calendar year snapshot, we've only had two periods of time where we've been in the red on any 12-month period of time, from January to December. That's the good news. The bad news is that last year was a really painful 12-month period of time. Last year, of course, was one of those periods of time where we were in the red. We were down about 12 and a half, 13% due to the Fed's hiking rates significantly leading to declines in both stock and bond markets. If you look at the far right-hand column bottom, you know, if you wanted the bottom line number for this almost 13-year period of time, through the end of May, 4.4% annualized rate of return for the investment pool that you're invested in. The two negative years, 2015 and then last year, 2022.
Question on, on that?
Yes, sir.
So if you look at your, say, your 10-year column?
Yep.
What is your rate of return over 10 years?
Yeah, so that'd be the second column over from the right through the ending period in May, it would be an annualized 3.59%.
Yeah. What's a two-year treasury note bringing right now?
Two-year? Roughly, well, the one-year is at 520 and change. Two-year, four, four seven, four six?
I guess a question to have, the way things are looking, I mean, looks like things are going down a little bit. Wouldn't we be better off just investing in some treasury notes?
Well, yeah, so current snapshot today, here in July of 2023, versus the period of time that we've invested in over, let's just round up and say 13 years. Bonds look great right now. Bonds look fabulous right now. How have they looked over the last 12 years? I mean, the screen's kind of blurry, but yeah.
They've been down like half a percent.
Well, no, 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 let's, let's, third row. Third row, we'll look at the 10-year column, third row from the top. Fixed income, 1.33%. So, you know, my, my tail is kind of between my legs in terms of our fixed income return, because that's, that's two-thirds of the portfolio. And I've been able, with bonds, which that two-year treasury is part of that equation, 1.33% annualized rate of return, that's the bad news. The good news is that, well, skip down two more rows and equities have generated an 8.79%. So I, I guess maybe the common ground that maybe we could find between us would be if we look at the next page, right? And we look at the bigger picture of what this, what this OPEB plan is really invested in. And then maybe we can also kind of think about it in, you know, terms of five minutes, 10 minutes from now, when we talk about the pension 115 trust, right? Because this is a conservative strategy. Two-thirds of the portfolio, or in the middle of the page, 50 to 80% of this portfolio is in bonds. Current OPEB plan, 50 to 80% in bonds. I think the future looks great for that 50 to 80% going forward. For, for either OPEB or if we decide to do the same thing for, for the 115 trust. So, so yeah, but, but I think we would want, my recommendation or preview of it in a couple of minutes, I think we would want some equities in, in a diversified mix for pension-type of investments. For the OPEB plan, certainly. And then, well, possibly for the 115 trust. You still have a skeptical look on your face, is there?
Well, it's just, the stock market's pretty high overall. And you often, you see corrections, that's all.
Well, it did, it did fall back, you know, a couple of years ago. Now it's almost, it's come back to where it was two years ago when the inflation kind of hit.
We're not quite back to January 1st of 2022, but, but God, 16%,
On its way.
Yeah, it's, yeah, there's a little bit of momentum, that's for sure.
As long as they don't, don't invest in real estate in San Francisco right now.
Well, well, it's not a mea culpa, but if you look at the equity section there in the middle of the page, the last line item under the equity section, real estate. We do have a 1% allocation to real estate equity investments REITs. And maybe a smidge, smidge would be in, well, some type of real estate exposure that would have a little bit of a fingerprint on San Francisco. So it's small, but, but it's certainly not a direct focus of what we do.
That's good, right?
Thanks be to God, yeah. So those are the main things that I wanted to just provide as an overview for the OPEB plan. And I'm going to hand it back to Mitch. He's going to sort of set the table in terms of our investment discussion for pension investment objective.
Okay, is that going to be the discussion of the, the investment strategy at this point? Because I guess interest rates are high, which tends to favor the bonds and all of that. But, you know.
Makes them more attractive, yes, sir.
Should we be in the moderately conservative area? Or should we go, should we increase our holdings in equity?
For, for OPEB?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, so excellent question. You have a multi-decade horizon. You have a roughly 12% funding ratio. You have the ability, in my opinion, to take more risk. More risk would be more equity exposure. So, you know, right now you have 20 to 40% equity range. We're at basically 30%. You certainly have the ability with a, you know, a modestly funded plan to, to increase that to, you know, maybe a 50/50 allocation, 50% stocks, 50% bonds. You could even do 60/40, 60% stocks, 40% bonds, given the, you know, low teen funding ratio. But I think that the bigger but here is, you know, we could take more, you know, more of an aggressive stance. But I really think the, the funding, the plan, and Mitch threw out a number of 100,000. Anything you can do to, to fund it, 100,000, 200,000, that's going to get you from point A to point B much more quickly than, you know, 10, 20% more in equities. So, so I think both questions need to be looked at collectively. But, but I would have no problem at all making a recommendation to take more risk with the OPEB plan.
So, because like with a 10-year horizon and the fact that bonds are probably, you know, because interest rates are higher, bonds are probably better right at this, maybe at this moment. But in two years, that could all change.
Well, yeah, I mean, so, so if the Fed does cut rates next year, you're probably even looking at some appreciating. you're probably even looking at some appreciation in terms of the price of bonds going up and having a higher income stream going forward. So moderately conservative could work, but equity should still outperform them over a 10-year period of time.
I guess the, the question is, though, being government stewards of the, the public money, how much risk should you take?
Yeah, big question, big question. And I think that that's, that might be, well, it's going to be probably a big talking point when we talk about 115 investing. You know, one of the, the more positive elements of taking a reasonable amount of risk with OPEB, right, is that if, if you take that risk commensurate with funding the plan, your, your discount rate goes up. And if your discount rate goes up, your liabilities go down. And so right now, the plan has a 2.5% discount rate associated with it and that's from your actuary, it's not from us. If you were able to increase that discount rate by, let's just say 1% to a 3.5% level, it's the rough rule of thumb and you'd want your actuary to veri- verify and validate what I'm about to say, but typically your liabilities go down 10%. So yes, it's the public money, but you know, if there was a way to reduce your liabilities by 10%, you'd probably want to know about it. You know, you, you could, you could reduce it by hundreds of thousands of dollars, which would help, you know, make the case to the public that, you know, taking a prudent amount of risk led to us spending less money on OPEB pension expense.
You know, just a curious question. Nowhere in, in, I didn't see it anywhere where it talks about what kind of fees you charge for it. Somewhere, it must have been somewhere, I didn't see it though.
It's not $200,000, I can tell you that. Right, so our investment fee between U.S. Bank and the investment advisor, Highmark, for plan balances less than $5 million, it is 35 basis points, 0.35%. Secondly, we invest in index-based investments. So within the index funds that we invest in, there's some modest, small embedded expense associated with that. For moderately conservative, that's seven basis points, 0.07%. So what's my all-in expense? It, it would be right around 0.42%, so not quite half a percent. And that's all the investment expenses, fees related to investment management that, that the county would, would incur.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
See you in a second. By the way, 700,000 times 0.06%, if I did the math really correctly, is $420 for the year.
Okay.
Divide that by 12 because most people think in terms of monthly.
I feel much better now.
Not so much. But fees are important, Brian. All right, so let's go to the pension. Just a reminder now, you've adopted this combo trust. We're going to transfer over your OPEB assets into the OPEB account, about 700,000, and then you're gaining, again, the ability to set money aside for pension. Now, I can't remember what I did seven months ago and you may not be able to too. So I just want to review the CalPERS numbers and why did we think this is a good idea? By the way, 300 other agencies have done this, meaning adopt a pension rate stabilization program, including 30 counties. So if you look at the numbers on page 17 here, the slide in front of you and you look at that middle column, these are the numbers reported by CalPERS, if you looked on their website right now, from last August. In one month from now, they will update them again. Unfortunately, they run one year behind and they claim because they have 4,000 agencies and it takes a long time to value, that's why it takes one year for them to report their numbers. But these are the most current. So that middle column for pension shows a liability of 282 million. Fortunately, two years ago, they had a great performance year. They earned 21% as you see on line two. Your assets went up to 220 million. So your liabilities went down to 62 million. So your funded ratio as of a year ago was 78%. The previous year you see on the left was 68%. Does anyone remember how they did last year on their performance? Well, you don't have to answer, I know, so I'll make it easy. They lost 7.5%. So it was a tough fiscal performance year for them and for us, as, as you've seen. My math wizards say that their, your funded ratio will go back to about what it was two years ago. So it'll go from about 78 to 68 because of that down performance year. What's interesting is the next line. Even though they had a great performance last year, your cost went from 10.4 million to 11.3, almost a million dollar increase, despite a 21% return year, despite lowering of your liabilities. It just shows that pension costs continue to rise regardless. And we want to get you set up with this pension rate stabilization program. What is it really? It's merely a savings account, not inside your treasury. It's inside a 115 trust. And the whole goal is to set money aside as best you can over time, allow Andrew and his team to earn a greater rate of return than your treasury, hopefully. And the money is there for your use. One-time money, if you have an emergency, bad budget year, you can use the funds to help fill the gap. So that's what it is. It's a safety net. All right, so in the packet that's been sent to Chuck and Tacy is this investment selection form. Again, your OPEB account on that left column is already currently checked with moderately conservative, although it's not checked on this form, but you're already in that moderately conservative strategy. The idea in front of you now is what do we do about the pension account? And my last slide before I turn it over to Andrew is, again, we have five model portfolios. You see the five risk tolerance levels in front of you, starting with conservative and then moderately conservative, which is the one that OPEB is in, and then it goes up to capital appreciation. These are 10-year returns through March 31st, so these are real historical returns. Now, the most common liquidity management program among public agencies in California is known as LAIF. You've probably heard of that, local agency investment fund. It's earned 1% over 10 years. So the opportunity is to try and outearn LAIF over time. Again, moderately conservative over that 10-year period has earned 3.82%. Your particular strategy has earned 4.4% because that's over a longer period of time. Those are our choices in front of you. I'll turn it over to Andrew now and he can give you some thoughts. Yeah, I can give you some thoughts, but I really liked the dialogue that we had a second ago. And, and I'm hoping it be, you know, to the extent that it can be interactive, I hope it's interactive. The far left-hand side of the page, the input phase, that's where, really where we are today, where, where I, I seek your counsel. And then once I, I get your thoughts in terms of what you're looking to accomplish here with the 115 trust, I can make a recommendation with respect to some type of asset allocation model. To maybe get the dialogue going, I, I can share two sort of themes that we've seen with, with other clients with respect to investment objective. The, the first client would, would come to us in pars and say, you know what? We, we have a, a funding ratio of 65, 70, 75%, some, some percentage. We, we want to get that up into the high 80s and so we're going to send to your organizations, you know, 2 million, 3 million every year. We're not going to touch it for a five to 10-year period of time and, and we just want you to grow it. And, and sometimes even clients will say, we'll create a little beauty contest between you and PERS, create an asset allocation that's somewhat similar in terms of reward and risk that, that PERS does. And Andrew, Highmark, that, that's your marching orders, maybe about 20% of the time. The other 80%, the majority of our, of our clients that we work with, look at it like a pension rate stabilization plans, whereby, you know, right now your annual pension expense is around 11 million-ish. Looks like it might go down a little bit over the next five, six fiscal years, but it's still going to be somewhere around 10 million a year in terms of expense. And, and Mitch highlighted some of those variables that may come up and bite you in terms of raising an annual pension expense over the next few years. And, and if that were to coincide with a, maybe a tougher year with the county than, than not, you do have this side pool of assets where, the only thing I would, I would correct with what Mitch said, it's not really a savings account because these assets are going to be invested more than likely in stocks and bonds and it's not the safety that a past book savings account offers. But, but it's going to be a side pool of assets invested in some type of, well, in the far left-hand corner, some type of risk tolerance proposition. But it's really the timing of the use of funds, the, the last bullet point on the far left-hand side under input phase. That's really the dynamic that makes this a much more variable type of relationship. We may come into this right now with sort of a four to five-year horizon where your best view is that you're not going to need these funds for at least five years, but something might change, fires or droughts or something, where you would then need these assets to reimburse yourself for pension expense. So while these are long-term liabilities, sometimes we don't necessarily work long-term with this type of relationship. And if we have a shorter-term time horizon, then we're definitely looking at more conservative allocations. Well, it's probably depicted better on the next page graphically, where you start from the bottom left to the outer right. The more conservative allocations would be in the bottom left-hand part of this efficient frontier. So conservative allocation is something that has right around 15, 20% in equities, 80 to 85% in bonds. For the OPEB plan, we're currently in the moderately conservative strategy. That's a 30% stock, 70% bond allocation. And I kind of just stop here in terms of giving thoughts and considerations for, for, for the, for the board. Certainly, we do have more investment, well, we do have more aggressive investment objectives, but I, I, coming into today, I wasn't really getting the vibe that, you know, a 50-50, 60-40 portfolio for pension was something we want to spend a whole lot of time on. Correct me if I'm wrong, but, 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 yeah, I think one of those two investment objectives would probably work well with what I've been told are, are some of the county schools for this 115 trust. And, and you know, you saw some of this with the OPEB investment where, where diversified amongst a variety of asset classes within equities and fixed income and, and this exhibit just sort, sort of shows that we, we have a variety of investment objectives. And, and I, the last page I have, and, and I always kind of want to caveat this with, my recommendation for the county is what I think is best for the county and it doesn't matter what other counties have done. That said, usually clients want to know what have other people done. And, and so here we have sort of a pie chart that depicts what other counties have done within our 115 program. And the biggest part of that pie wedge, if you would, moderately conservative, which is what the OPEB's under right now, almost 41%. So not quite half, but, but certainly the, the majority of clients, our, our county clients have selected the moderately conservative strategy. And then 27% have selected the, what we call the moderate strategy, which is a 50-50 type of portfolio.
So when would we, if we start placing funds into the 115, when would it be expected that we would access those, that, that money that, or, you know, the earnings that are in that? Is that like in 10 years or?
You have full access, you have limits in terms of the amount that you can, I think it's, yeah, you, you're, you're limited to two years of annual pension expense that you can reimburse the county on. But in terms of the timing, that, that's more predicated on county budget dynamics and desire. The limit though is.
I guess, I, I don't know what the, the actual question I want to ask is, but when would it be expected that we would actually want to tap that fund to, to do something, you know, to pay down some of the unfunded liability?
I, I, I think that probably is, is.
Is that like, in, in five years, we park something there? Would we tap it in five years or we?
I, I don't think we would tap it for a long, long, long time because we're.
So a 10-year horizon?
I'd say probably a 30-year horizon. The whole, the idea that we're going to actually make a dent on that is, is, without seriously making cuts to what we're expen, where our spending plan is right now. The, the direction I've received from the board is that roads are the most important thing to tackle right now. We need to get work done on the roads. That's where I am, I am stressing that with my staff. I'm stressing that with everything we do, we don't have resources to, to put into a, a fund like this and, and address that challenge. We're talking about going to the, the, to the voters to ask for a, to ask for a, have some sales tax. And I don't know how we can start putting money here and ask them to fund that at the same time. I think we need to put up. When we created the 115, we did it and we told Mitch that we weren't going to be able to fund it. And I don't think we're going to be able to fund it. That's what we've talked about. So, yeah, that, that's my position on it.
I've had a few counties do this. Palomas comes to mind, which was, they adopted and they didn't put in dollar one for at least two years. But still got to get the account set up. So ideally, choose an investment strategy as best you can today. We get the paperwork done, we get the account set up. And then if funds don't come for whatever the period of time is, let's say two years, five years, we then revisit this when you get ready to put in dollar one. Because who knows what the market will be like then? You, the strategy you pick today may be not the one that you want when you finally put in your first contribution amount, whenever that may be. So that's what we have counseled with a number of agencies that said, I want to get this started. I want to get it open. You never know when one-time money shows up. We want to be ready, but we certainly don't know when we're going to put in the first dollar. So choose an investment strategy as best you can for today and we'll revisit this when you finally do make that first contribution to make sure that the investment strategy you choose today is the right one. It may be a different one in five years, that's for sure. Does that make sense? Okay.
Should, um, the other count is the OPEB?
Yes, there, there's two, two accounts, the OPEB account and the, the 115 for the retirement.
Should we consider the investment strategy on that as well or?
If you'd like. If you're comfortable with leaving it moderately conservative, that's a direction. Or if, if you want to move up to the, what was that, the moderate?
Moderate.
Moderate, then that is up to the board.
I think I'm okay if we even work it out moderately conservative.
Supervisor Grue?
Well, I can see some advantages if we went moderate. Then you would be more active on the stock side to keep the earnings up. With the bonds, you're pretty much a passive investor, just you get the report and that's what it is and not a lot you can do there. So I can see from that point of view, but you're almost doubling your risk too.
I, I think we get the double-ish element if we go from moderately conservative, which is 30% stocks, 70% bonds, out to that, that capital appreciation.
That's what I always think.
If we just go 20% up, we probably get maybe 20, you know, maybe about 25, 30% more risk, which is not a huge amount, but it's a little bit more, a little bit more.
Less it happens.
Fair point.
Supervisor Forster?
Well, you're probably not going to have that much more risk. It just, as a, and as an elected official publicly, you, you get registered on those years that, that you do take a hit in the market. So that's got to be recognized that if you're willing to take some of that heat, if it's an election year, it may not be a good time. an election year, it may not be a good time to take that heat. But we're supposed to be stewards, good stewards of the public money. I don't see a, a big risk in keeping most of it in moderately conservative and then a smaller portion in moderate, myself. We're not doing social investing like PERS in this either, correct?
No, sir.
Really, really, there's a pretty big range though on what you have there is where you invest as far as, you know, it's, you're talking, um, oh, like the moderately conservative, twenty to forty percent, so you can actually have up, up, um, forty percent in, in equities.
That, that, that's very true. It is one of the reasons why I, I, I still gave you our economic forecast. If we think we're going to a recession, it's difficult for us to be closer to the forty percent side of, of that equity range. But yeah, if, if we do find ourselves in a recession, we probably will be tempted to take a little bit more risk as we at least perceive to be in the latter innings of, of that recession.
Yeah, I'm not a stock guy. A while back, I told, I told my son after COVID, he wanted to get in stocks, I said, well, look at the oil stocks, they're, they're in tanks and people drive cars. And, you know, if you look at stuff like that, yeah, you can do pretty good in some of your investments.
But to your point, yes, we can go up to forty percent on the equity range.
So if you go the moderate, you can go up to sixty percent?
Yes, we can. Probably about a year and a half ago, we were fifty-four-ish, yeah.
Yeah. I'm okay if we even work it out, I think.
So Supervisor Forster, your, your recommendation was to keep the majority in the moderately conservative fund, but then place a certain portion in moderate, was that?
Yeah.
Can we, can we do that?
Unfortunately, no, we can't. We, it has to be sort of a all or, all one of those investment objectives.
Okay, we can't, uh.
Yeah, can't sprinkle twenty percent here, you're aggressive one, and eighty percent in the other one now.
You can't, you can't, as high charge shows, you can't spread your risks across different ranges.
No, 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 that, that dynamic, that, that option doesn't exist. So you have to pick one of the, one of the five.
Yeah, but, but you've got that choice, we, we're giving you that choice yourself, you can be, you know, twenty to forty percent, depending on how you see the market.
The, the firm positions between twenty and forty percent, you bet. So it's not just me, but.
Yeah, well, whoever, you know, whoever's looking at it.
I'd kind of like to hear from our treasure tax collector, I think she should be part of this discussion too.
Um, I've attended the meeting today just to kind of see where this was going to go. I know it's not something I look over.
Go ahead, switch to me, please.
I'm sorry, Elizabeth Nelson, treasure tax collector. I know it's something that Chuck looks over, so it's not anything that I'm, have my fingers involved in. But I am in agreement with Chuck that there isn't the funds to, to put into it. That was one of the things I was talking with my chief deputy, it's like, we're, you know, where, where would that money come from? Right now, I, just on our insurance, I was talking with our auditor, Tracy, yesterday, you know, it's like we had a big warrant run on claims and checks, and it's like it's the time of year where, you know, to pay out the insurance, and I, you know, didn't have that on my little calendar, I have the one coming up for the PERS unfunded liability. So I do keep money in Leif and Camp, as you're all aware, to be able to transfer in and out. And Leif has been doing, you know, quite well, so you hate to see that drop, but we need to have that cash flow, you know, forward using on the expenses that we already have But I, I think as far as where Chuck has the investment approach right now, I wouldn't, wouldn't want to rock it, you know, I, I would, if, if it was with, with me, it's like right now, like what you've said, you know, several of you have mentioned, like with the bonds, when I'm looking at investing our funds for the county and like what Richard Forster said too, it's like we have to be accountable for those funds for our constituents in the county. I would like to throw more money towards the bonds, but I can't do that right now either because, you know, you have to keep a balanced portfolio, and the couple purchases I did invest in were treasury notes, which was another part of what you gentlemen had, had mentioned.
Yeah, and if.
I, I think, I think, you know, each of you has made a valid point in regards to being, you know, the moderate, you know, conservative, you know, where the investments are, how they fluctuate, and it's, it's just, uh.
Yeah, if they do, if they do good, you look wonderful.
Exactly.
If they do really bad, you end up like Orange County.
Yeah, yeah, and, and we have been getting pretty good returns on the, the Leif and the Camp. It, I understand the slide shows one point zero, one percent, but within the last couple months, which has been more at three percent, you know, so, and then we get that interest quarterly, and that helps everybody within the, the pool investment, you know, when it comes to the interest apportionment.
Hey, any more questions?
So the, the four point four percent that we over, I guess since inception, is that for, is that after all the fees have been removed and everything?
Thank you.
The four point four percent would be the gross of, of fee, uh, investment return. So the thirty-five basis points that I shared with you, you'd want to take that off, the annualized numbers, so that would be what, about four, fifteen?
Okay.
Or, yeah, four, five.
Okay.
I think what's like, right now, it'd be about what, about three thousand a year for management, I think, I think I'd be the correct number roughly, point four-two, almost half a percent.
Yeah.
Till ten years or, yeah. I think I'd be right, Mitch. If you got about seven hundred thousand dollars in there, it's half, half a percent, you know, one percent would be.
So.
I thought it's point three-five and point oh.
Point three-five. For our investment fee.
So it'd be point.
Yeah, correct.
Four-two, so I'm.
Forty-two all in, yeah.
Yeah.
Both of them together.
Yeah, it'd be kind of curious, you know, I mean, we need to do rough math, it'd lower that down a little bit, but not a lot, really.
Do my best.
Yeah, no, I mean, no, just, just, I'm just figuring, Frank's question was a, a fair question.
So what is our direction to staff? What do we, stay where we are, moderate, conservative?
Yeah, that's where, that's where I'm at.
Yeah.
Because Richard's point, you know, I mean, goes from twenty, there's twenty to forty percent leeway there, so that gives, they want to go in some of that, um, more equity they can.
Supervisor Forster?
I'll go with the majority on this one right now.
Supervisor X?
Well, I was the one guy that was going to buck the system, but it doesn't look like there's enough ups there anyhow, so.
Well, you can still buck it, I mean, come on. Pretend you're Brian for a change.
Chuck, what are you, what are we looking for?
Uh, whatever direction you would like to, to proceed in, whichever investment strategy is.
It looks like the investment strategy for the board right now is the moderate, can stay with the moderate conservative.
We'll set up the one fifteen with the same strategy.
Correct. You, you actually have other counties that are, what percentage of other counties are going into the, um, moderate?
Twenty-seven.
I doubt a many are going to balance for capital appreciation.
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-three?
Yeah.
So you actually have some counties that are going into capital appreciation?
Yeah.
Yeah. Go ahead and speak into the mic over here.
Well, the reason why?
Oh, well, yeah, I, I didn't mean to be snarky when I said this, but the, the beauty contest concept where, all right, we know, as Chuck said, you know, twenty, thirty-year horizon, we're not going to touch this, we want to be as aggressive as we are underlying with Cal PERS, and let's see who does better, and, and let's diversify away from, from Sacramento. So those variety of motivating factors, say, you know, Andrew and team, be as aggressive as, as PERS is with, with the underlying main pension plan.
I will also say that if we ever get into a situation again where the interest rates are back down low and we, we do refinance our, our obligation with PERS, then this becomes a very different situation, and having a one fifteen is, is seriously important, and, um.
So it'll be an asset at that period of time?
It would be, and it would also be a, a hedge against Cal PERS. If, if we, if we issued refinanced bonds and, and repay our obligation to PERS, which promptly then loses value because they, they screw up their, their investment strategy, having this funded to offset that risk is, is the way to go.
I think PERS has already screwed up their investment strategy, they've, they've shown their experts at it, so.
Okay, do you have enough for your direction, Chuck?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I guess we could always come back and revisit this in the future too.
Absolutely. That would be my recommendation is, no funding is coming anytime soon, we're clear on that. I think when you do have funding in the future, if and when, we revisit this.
Yeah, sure enough.
Don't want you to feel like it's locked in. It is not locked in, it always can be changed.
And possibly get through the next presidential election and get some stability.
Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it.
Yeah, appreciate your time.
Thank you.
That was no remark on the current administration, I mean, just in the election cycle is turbulent.
Being up. I liked your original remark.
Yep. Okay, consideration, um, three D, consideration of consolidating response to the notice of participation received from the Amador County Unified School District regarding a school consolidation project. Planning and Public Works have included draft comments for consideration. Comments are due July twentieth.
So Supervisors, we got the, the letter that's included in here for asking for comments for areas of concern that we would like the school board to look at when, as they do their EIR. Planning didn't have any comments, you see, uh, Public Works comments that are there. And the question for the board, is there anything else that the board would like to add before we submit them for the school's consideration? We do not approve their EIR. We, while we are asking for here is areas for them to look at as they perform their EIR.
Who would approve their EIR?
They do their own.
Oh, okay. With regards to, uh, Public Works' letter, um, would that, their EIR finds that they support that project at Wicklow, would that enable them to secure funds to help that project become a reality or?
I'm not sure how this would really affect their funding.
Yeah.
Just what they would have to do in order to mitigate the.
Okay, so potentially it might say they would have to mitigate that or do that project as the mitigation?
Right, that, that, that intersection that we're asking to look at is, is impacted, then some sort of mitigation needs to be devised.
I see.
That, that's as far as I believe it would go.
Okay.
I have a question to counsel, this seems like a very short comment period from the school district, are, is there a statutory requirement?
This is just on the, the notice of preposition, which is what topics will we?
Okay.
Look at. There'll be a draft EIR, and there'll be a comment period, which will be longer.
Okay.
And then that's where you'll have all the detail, and they'll have proposed mitigations and everything like that.
Okay. I, I would suggest that Mr. Vila work with, um, John Gaddney from ACTC. We, we covered this at our last ACTC meeting, and our council had prepared comments, I think they were public in the, in our, in our documents, so they can be reviewed along with the additional areas that were cited by our ACTC members, our board members. One of those areas that, that I cited in addition was, um, the school district says they're going to stage releases of their students to deal with the intersection at forty-nine, eighty-eight and Argonaut Lane. Even if they do that, there's still going to be a lot of other activities going on, whether it be sports activities or varying activities, where you have masses of people coming in and leaving at certain times. They can't stage those. So it's very important that the consultant realize, while, I think it's a fantasy myself that they're going to stage student releases, but you can't do that for every other activity.
I, I'd agree. I think you're right. You know, one, one thing I was, on Mr. Vila's letter, um, like the third paragraph, it talks about currently access to campus via Argonaut Lane, a considerably high estimate. Probably doesn't matter, but it's a little bit confusing language, Richard. Maybe you can rewrite up a little bit of that. I think, I think it'd be good if you worked with Mr. Gaddney, but overall, I think his letter's pretty good. He addressed the point where it's, you know, just there's, there's going to be a real, a traffic impact on, um, the Argonaut Lane area especially.
You just have to recognize that, uh, you know, this, we need to get this letter, you know, signed by me, or who is actually signed by? Is it signed by the board or?
It can be whoever, since Public Works is the only department that's responding, if we want to give them direction and just have the letter come from Public Works, that's fine.
Yeah, I guess there was one question that occurred to me, I don't know if, um, we know that information or whether that will come out of the EIR on this particular, um, letter from Public Works, but I guess the number of students has increased, which I'm assuming is coming from, you know, our, Amador High over to, uh, Argonaut, and of those students, how many are coming from the Ione area, which would really, I guess was mentioned in the letter, would benefit from access via Wicklow as opposed to Center Creek, which may not go all the way to Wicklow, or I don't know whether, if they went to Wicklow and up to the school that way, would, would that also be a benefit as well? So I don't know. What are we talking about at that point? But we don't have the answers to that, do we? I would assume most Argonaut kids, most Ione kids already go to Argonaut, that's their school. Do they? Oh, okay, that's their school? Oh, okay.
Most of them do.
Most of them do? Is it optional that they can study them?
They, they can go to Amador, they just have to make a request to the school district and it's routinely approved.
I see. Well, it's probably still would be a benefit then for them, the I, they, okay, never mind.
Um, Rich Vila, Public Works Director, I wanted to address the, the awkward language I had in there with regards to the, the split, and I tried to get those numbers, I requested those numbers from the school district, I never got a response, so I, that's an assumption on my part, and I, and I feel that it's probably a high number. I went that way on purpose because it's, probably the real number is even worse, that, you know, the majority of the kids are, do not come in from that direction, so the increase that we would expect from the Amador High School is, percentage-wise, would be greater than, than what's stated here, I'm just trying to be a little conservative on that. But I did try to get that information, you know, how many kids are coming from Ione versus the Jackson area, the current Argonaut, um, campus, and I, I was unable to get that information.
Okay. Maybe, maybe you put in there, trying to be, trying to be conservative, you used a high number or something, I don't know, it's just, it's considerably high, it's kind of.
Yeah.
You got to use what you, you, uh, your assumptions tell you, if the school difference, district is not going to be responsive.
It is, it is, it is an awkward, I, I would agree, I wasn't, if I was an English major, I wouldn't be an engineer.
Right.
I think ACT. I think ACTC found the school district non-responsive, too, until we really pushed the issue.
And overall, I think your letter pretty well lays out the point.
And and just for a point of of clarification, the Argonaut campus is bordered by Argonaut Lane and Stony Creek Road, that intersection. Argonaut Lane in that area is in the city Jackson. And actually, most of Stony Creek along the school frontage is in the city of Jackson. There's a strange, skewed property line, and Stony Creek Road starts in the city Jackson, and as you get down towards a corner, it ends up all into the county. So the commenting as far as their access onto Stony Creek would be a city of Jackson comment. Just wanted to throw that out there because it's, you would think Stony Creek Road is just a county road, but it there's a weird property line there.
I would make some additional comments, though, on the extracurricular activities and that families or the families and other community members are drawn into the campus area by those activities, whether it be sporting activities or any other extracurricular.
Yeah, there's a social aspect to a traffic pattern. It's probably as big as the school on Tuesdays and Fridays anyway in the winter when you're playing volleyball and basketball.
And that's correct.
Would you like that, the the letter to reflect that concern as well?
I would like to like it, too.
Just some convention of that.
It's a separate paragraph, just indicating all of the the social extracurricular activities as well as community activities that take place. I think I went up there last year for a, they were selling Girl Scout cookies, and there was a horde of people. Well, do we have a motion to, oh, actually, we need to go comment, public comment, Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Back to the board.
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to give Richard Vila authorization to send a letter, and he also worked with Mr. John Gaddney, maybe doing a few modifications to that.
All good.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, five zero. Thank you, Rich. Three E, Administrative Agency, Discussion and Possible Action Regarding the Approval of Home Run Financial as a Provider for the Unincorporated Amador County for the California Pace Program.
I think there's some reps reps from the Home Run that if they could raise our hand, we will unmute. But to set the stage, this is back on the agenda after the comments that were made during the public comment, the last board meeting about the Pace Program and the fact that Y Green has left the state. So it's back before you. I think the reps are here to answer any questions. You have the you have the resolution in front of you that you would need to approve if you wanted to allow these folks to go forward. They would need to to develop an agreement with tax collector and the auditor in order to reimburse them for the costs associated with administration of this program, and that has not yet been done. But it would be pretty simple.
Is is that language in the in the resolution or?
No.
Or does it say that compel them in the resolution to do that?
The law does.
Okay. But but your action, if you pass the resolution, you should probably make it contingent on there being a collections agreement as well. Okay. Which we had with with our previous program provider.
We don't have a representative. We do.
Are they? They're unmuted. Speak when ready.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Rachel Hobbs. I'm with Home Run Financing. And I just wanted to thank you for your time. Thank you for your time last time when my colleague attended with a homeowner. We are working with a homeowner in your county who had come to us for financing and found that we were not yet approved. So thank you for your time. Thank you for your staff's time. I just wanted to point out that with the CSCDA program, you do get several providers, so Home Run Financing, Renew Financial, and Fortify, the residential providers. And just to, I just wanted to flag that so that I know you've gone through this process twice before, and those providers are no longer there. With the CSCDA program, you do get a selection of providers, which gives your homeowners more choice, and also would make sure that you wouldn't find yourselves in this situation again. So you you do get three providers with this one vote as part of, we're all part of the CSCDA program and have been vetted by them. But happy if you have any other questions. My colleague, Gabe Holbert, is on. He's the one who attended your public comment with the homeowner. And we're here if if you have any questions. Thank you very much.
Yeah, quick question. So Rachel, the three providers, a a member of the community could sign an agreement or or contract with any of those three providers?
Yes.
Okay, for the same types of services, or do they specialize?
No, we all offer the same residential that's prescribed by law. Yeah.
Okay. Can other solar members of the community sign up to be a provider?
Sure. We do have to make sure that any contractor we work with is licensed and insured, and we also have to make sure that they've undertaken the six-hour mandatory training that DFPI put in place in twenty nineteen. But we are open, you know, to working with contractors in your area for sure.
Okay.
How do you, Rachel, how do you vet your people out to make sure that they have a process? Because in our former Pace Program, we did, I did have one issue in my district with a daughter of an older couple that was complaining that the program was not fully explained to her parents, the cost. Unfortunately, that provider had a system in place that showed redundancy in the the process of explaining the payments to her parents, not just one time, but I think as many as three times. They had conversations with them before it was accepted. So are the providers vetted to see if they have those processes in place?
Yes, this is Gabe Holbert here from Home Run. So we do have a welcome call that is recorded, that all the terms of the financing agreement are explained in. And then we also, by law, with the DFPI, have a formalized complaint process where any complaints against any of the Pace providers are handled in a professional manner and recorded, and we're involved with any of that, too.
Yeah, but ahead of that time, I think you were asking about the program administrators. So the program administrators who provide Pace, we have to be licensed with the DFPI since January twenty nineteen. I think that was your question.
All right, thank you. That's good to know that that's there's some kind of protection in place, so you don't you don't get accused of elder abuse and things like that.
I would also add, too, that with homeowners over age sixty-five, there is a five-day right to cancel. There's a three-day right to cancel with all others, but with homeowners over sixty-five, by law, it is a five-day right to rescission.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor Crew?
No comments.
Supervisor Neno? The Greg, this is my kind of question for you, is that worst-case scenario, somebody fails to to make the payment. What is what is the county involved in in dealing with that?
I don't think the county is involved directly in that situation.
But, you know, they're.
We're just facilitating putting the the.
The payment on.
Lean on the on the tax roll.
Okay, and then having it on, okay, but it's on the part of the tax roll. So that but I guess if they fail to make the payments, they're also failing making the payment on the tax on the home also. I'm kind of curious, how does, you know, because we normally wait out, what, five years?
Yeah, but I think your question is, is does the county have to pay anything to the solar provider? And I think the answer is no, if they go delinquent.
I don't know. That's a better question for them, probably, how the what the process is when there's a delinquency.
Okay.
Do we still have them on there?
Yeah. What is the process for you guys if there's a delinquency?
I think we have, I have two other colleagues who have their hands up. Mr. Peterson?
Hi, this is Chris Peterson. I run Government Affairs for Fortify Financial. We're also a provider under the CSCDA. And that process, the county doesn't have any financial obligation. We actually work with property owners who have issues with making their payments on their taxes. If they need some support with that, we're willing to work with them. If they don't have a mortgage, you know, typically, that's something that we can work with. If they do have a mortgage, a lot of times that if there is a shortfall, which can not necessarily be attributed to Pace, but just in general, the servicer will actually make that payment, and then they'll spread out that payment over a certain number of years in order to make sure that person stays in their property. That is the first lien priority or the first lien mortgage holder is kind of protecting their investment. There's also what's called the Loan Loss Reserve Fund, which in the event of a of a first lien holder experiencing any type of loss due to a Pace assessment, then they can be made whole. And that is a ten million dollar fund through the state of California. As of today, I think that's been tapped twice in the last, oh, Jesus, it's been over ten years at this point. So it is very rare that that happens. Our actual, these are folks that are, you know, we do check to make sure that they can afford their payments. We have ability to repay. All of that's audited through the DFPI in the state of California. So there are several different, like you said, redundancies in place to ensure that folks are getting into something that they can afford, and then it makes sense for them financially. And so when these are typically homeowners that have, you know, they've been timely on their payments, timely on their taxes, have the ability to repay, and are improving their properties. And so we tend to see a much lower rate of default than even a regular mortgage. And so it's it historically hasn't been an issue that comes up very often at all.
Okay, thank you. Any public comment? Anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time. We do have one now.
Oh.
Oh.
Thank you, Supervisors. This is Chelsea Olson, Programs Director for Renew Financial. I just wanted to echo Rachel Hobbs in saying thank you for staff's time, for your time for considering this resolution. We do appreciate the opportunity to work with your your property owners and just appreciate everyone's time. So Renew Financial is the third residential provider that would be eligible to offer financing for your residents. So thank you very much.
Chairman Brown, I do have a question for the providers, and and any of you can answer this, this County Counsel Greg Gilot. And with respect to the collections agreement, usually in the past, we've had it, I assume it's with CSCDA. Do you have contact, or can you facilitate us getting that sort of agreement in place so the county's costs are are covered?
Yes, I connected Mr. Eyle already with James Hamill, who's the Managing Director at CSCDA by email, and CSCDA will be taking care of that part.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But just real quick, are the are the actual providers listed in the resolution?
Yes. Yes.
So all all three of the ones that you've mentioned, Home Run, Fortify, and Ready?
Renew Financial is the third one, yes. They're listed in the resolution.
Okay, it's back to the board.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing the Pace Program contingent upon the collection agreement being resolved.
Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Five zero. Thank you very much. We're on to three F, Discussion and Possible Action Relative to the Chairman's Signature on a Letter of Appreciation to Senator Alvarado Gill for her assistance in securing a two-point-three million earmark in the state budget for repaving the Upper Ridge Road from Climax to State Route eighty-eight.
Well, Supervisors, this is the the first good news we've gotten from the state in a long time.
I think it's the second. We got the the fire station.
We did get the fire station.
Fire station, and now this.
So, yeah, we did get a two-point-three line item allocation from the state for repaving of Upper Ridge Road. And as I mentioned there, and the item, just wanted to send a letter of appreciation. So I've got to reach out to Dana and Jorgensen in Senator Gill's office to verify that that's the way they would like it. If they would prefer a resolution or even for her to come in person and and receive it, that would be preferred on our end, too. So we may not send the letter, but we may have a resolution in the future. So we'll work it out. There will be some form of appreciation going that way. It is it's a good thing, and and I think we should all be appreciative.
And what I've been watching on the Senator Bills and stuff, she's been going the direction I think will help the county.
You wanted to just table this, then tell me we get an answer?
We can go on and approve a approve a letter pending something, some other superseding action.
About letter, res, okay. This can't do a res. Okay, yeah.
Yeah, we have, we don't have a resolution yet, but.
So a resa letter?
Resa letter. Possible resa letter.
No, because I mean, it's 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 a lot of money, and we need money for roads. I really, I really appreciate your efforts on requiring that for us in the budget, so. That was that was one of the four main roads that was designated, or at least a significant portion of the four of the main roads that really needed a lot of attention. So that'll go a long way. Yeah, I think one thing is, I think it may have been, I think the request was like for ridge roads, the the main focus is upper ridge and then maybe some of the lower if there's if there's any leftover.
If we can stretch it, we will.
Yeah.
Because we don't need to do the cement overlay or any of that other.
It will not be paved in gold.
And it will not be paved in gold. Okay, do I have a motion? Actually, we need to go out to public. Public, anybody on Zoom?
Not at this time.
Okay. Back to a motion?
Yeah, I'd make that motion, send a second letter.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Now we're on to three G, Approval of the last board meeting minutes. We're going to prove the minutes with one minor correction.
Second.
Okay. Call for the vote again. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? A German until Tuesday, July twenty-fifth at nine AM. Closed session begins at eight thirty. This completes this meeting.